Calling the regular council meeting on Monday, December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Please rise to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
Can I get approval of the agenda? We do need to make one addition. Other citizens business verbal number three Ferguson's regarding parking on South Summit. And may I make motion that we approve the amended agenda?
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting and executive session on Monday, December fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same sign. Any nomination or recognition? So the chamber will be recognized at the meeting in January. Your certification. No certificates for today. Citizens Business and Writing Plumbing and Electrical License Approval for two thousand twenty-three. There's a lot. So the following have requested plumbing license for the two thousand twenty-three calendar year. All fees have been paid and proof of insurance and bond have been provided. The first contractor is Powder River Heating and Air Conditioning. Master plumber Jay Drake. Running man Brett Osman. Steve Sales. Limited Mechanical Apprentice Eric Mees. Jason Walker. Jose Zabala. Plumbing contractor Anderson Plumbing and Contracting. Master plumber Clay Anderson. Apprentice plumber Nathan Anderson. Looks Plumbing and Heating. We have master plumber Scott Pottman. Journeyman plumbers Dan Hartman. Contractor Black Hills Plumbing and Heating. Master plumber William Seminar. Apprentice plumber Chris Gold. Michael Patterson Josh Kaufman. Contractor Mountain View Plumbing and Heating. Master plumber Brian Olson. Apprentice plumber Rob Wismuski. Contractor Twenty-One Electric and Plumbing. Master plumber HBAC Aaron Apolitano. Contract Summit Plumbing and Heating LLC. Master plumber David Hopkins. Apprentice plumber Robin King. Cameron Richardson. E. Lord Martinez. And Michael Haynes. Limited Plumbing Contractor Black Hills Gas Rooms LLC. Limited plumber Johnny Munder. Gas piping. Limited plumber James Current. Limited plumber Mark Christiansen. Contractor Black Cat Construction Water Sewer Line. Limited plumber Jeff Sortch. Contractor Wayne Heating and Air. Limited plumber Wayne Anderson. Gas piping. Contractor Pulligan Soft Water of Hot Springs. Limited plumber Richard Austin. South Water Service. And then limited mechanical plumber license for two thousand twenty-three calendar year. We have mechanical plumbers contract for Always There Heating and Cooling. Mechanical license. Limited mechanical license Timothy Allman. Limited master mechanical license for Comfort Systems Heating and Cooling. Kerry Lindling Gas Piping. Contractor for division. Mechanical. Limited mechanical plumbers license Stephen Van Damme. Apprentices are Brian Morgan, Michael Ball Sales. Patrick Sloan, Johnny Reed, Austin Youngblood. Contractor for Midwestern Mechanical. Master plumber Chris Petzel. Limited mechanical plumbers Daniel Whitney Lewis Campbell. And then we have contractor for Climate Solutions. Limited mechanical plumber Nathan Kins. Plumbers contractor Tissier Inc. Limited mechanical license David Del Salado. The following have requested electrical licenses for two thousand twenty-three calendar year. All fees and fines have been paid. Proof of insurance and bond have provided. Electrical contractor for Homestead Works Electrical. Master electrician Howard Voel. Electrical contractor Pro Electric. Master electrician Curtis E. Judy. Journeyman electrician Charles Lynn Smith. Keith Norman King. Apprentice electrician Tyler Penny. Contractor H&amp;H Electric. Master electricians Christopher David Hill. Curtis J. Maxwell. Journeyman electricians Jason Gray and Brody Reed. Contractor Twenty-One Electric. Master electrician Joshua Liggett. Journeyman electrician Ryan Jurnovich. Apprentice electrician Peyton Tartsch. Contractor ITC Electrical. Master electrician Michael Karut. Electrical contractor Rick's Electric. Master electrician Rick Phillips. Journeyman electrician Trenton Eagle. Apprentice electrician James Lewis and Kate Engel. Electrical contractor Hunter Electric. Master electrician Zachary Hunter. Contractor Arrow Electric Inc. Master electrician is Richard R. Andrews. Journeyman electrician Brett James Williams. Apprentice electrician Shane Bollander Bryce Perkins. Electrical contractor White Construction LLC. Master electrician Brian Swan. Apprentice electrician Nathan Fisher.
May I make a motion that we approve the plumbing and electrical licenses submitted for two thousand twenty-three?
Second.
Do we have a motion in second? Any further discussion? Well, I just have kind of something to say just so that we know on record that these are the only ones that are. So if somebody else is working for this company, they're not under this license. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, same time. Citizens Business Verbal Bruce Perkins ordinance regarding bikes on sidewalks.
Thank you. I don't know if this needs to actually be said or not, but I'd like to get it on record that during the review process that Main Street sidewalks should be remain bicycle and skateboard free for safety purposes. We've had instances in the past where kids trying to run down the sidewalk with crowds, especially during rally. It happened a couple of times last year. So I would like the city council to add that to this process in the writing of the ordinance. To indicate where bicycles and skateboards are to be and not to be mainly for safety purposes. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Number two, other citizens business verbal. Caleb Carter, Weston County Natural Resource District.
I appreciate you letting me have a couple of minutes of your time here. I did pass out copies of the annual report that I put together for the district. If anybody else would like a copy, I've got some additional of those. It's got our annual report from our last fiscal year as well as our plan of work as operating under current rules. So our fiscal year runs from July first to June thirtieth of each year. So if you'd like to make things complicated for us and try to run it as different as everybody else as possible. But I guess just to highlight a few things that I think are relevant to the council. This year we had, so every year we host, co-host the Black Hills Natural Resource Camp up at Mallow. And this past year, past fiscal year, we had thirty-one kids come participate from Weston County, which is the most that we've had in quite a few years. So that was really exciting to see a resurgence of interest in the camp and seeing the kids up there. We take about a hundred kids every year. And we partner with Campbell County Conservation District and Powder River Conservation District out of DC. So as well as Crip County Natural Resource District too. But we get kids from all over Wyoming, albeit I would say the majority are from Gillette in Weston County. And then we get a few that come from neighboring areas as well. So really excited that we could again see that increase. That camp is still going strong and fills up pretty quick. So that's always the first week of June and we start taking applications usually in April for that. And the district pays the registration fee for any U. for Weston County that attend as well. So really excited about that. It's a lot of fun to be a part of. It's a three-day camp up there. So many other things. Our tree sale has also seen a resurgence lately. We sold almost three thousand seedling trees this year. And so that's really exciting as well to see the increase in that. And this year is already looking to be even bigger. So really excited about that as well and seeing trees getting planted. So our Hazardous Waste Day, and now this is reporting from two thousand twenty-one Hazardous Waste Day. We collected over nine thousand pounds of waste, three hundred gallons and about seventy pounds of food that was collected for the food bank. And I, so this year in two thousand twenty-two, I haven't got the totals back on the amount of waste that we collected yet. It was down a little bit for previous years, but I really pushed hard to try to get more food donations for the food bank. And we also take monetary donations as well that we put towards helping with costs for the Hazardous Waste Day and so on. But I really wanted to increase food donations this year to the food bank. And we collected about two hundred and twenty pounds of food this fiscal year in just September two thousand twenty-two. So that's not in this report, but I just want to mention that because I was really excited to see that increase. Even though our waste collection overall decreased, we increased our collection of food donations. So excited about that and it's kind of a way to provide service to the community and also give back to the community at the same time. And some other things, I won't go over too much in here in too much detail, but our water resources program as far as new wells, pipelines, stock tanks, that's still a big part of our program. We put down almost thirty thousand feet of pipe last year. And this year I think we'll probably top that again, hopefully, if we can get the funding pulled together. We've got some grants. We're still looking for some matching funds to match some of these grants from the Forest Service and some other entities. So hopefully, we're going to be able to top that again, but we're also really excited about that too. And obviously, it's not about the numbers, but when you can show an increase in numbers, you're showing an increasing impact. And so in a way, it kind of becomes a little bit about the numbers, just trying to show that impact. And really what it comes down to for me is trying to have the biggest impact, you know, because we are using public funds and we get a mill levy. And so for me, I'm always trying to show what impact we're having with those funds and how we're utilizing those funds. And one of the things that I'm really excited about, and we've been working on this since I started two years ago, actually, two and a half years ago now, is we wanted to leverage funds that we had, both in our budget and as well as some private grants that we have received from the Nineman Foundation, to bring in additional funding for forest health. So doing thinning work, fuels mitigation, work in our forests and our private lands around the county. And we were finally able to do that this year. We were able to secure a grant with Crip County Natural Resource District. We secured four hundred thousand dollars to spend between the two counties. And this again is not in this report because this is current year, but I'm mentioning it because it was an effort that's been building and we were finally able to get that. And that funding came from the, what is it called? The Wyoming Natural Resource, Wyoming Wildfire and Natural Resource Foundation. Excuse me. So we're really excited about that as well and getting some good projects on the ground. We've been operating for about the last decade on funding from State Forest Street. And with everybody, you know, they're feeling the squeeze and had the shifts of funds around and we're not able to continue that grant that we were working under. But we've been able to secure additional funding and hopefully long-term funding for that as well. And to go along with that and to kind of tie that back into the city of Newcastle as well as the town of Upton, the community of Osage. One of the things we're also doing is we took over coordination of the Wooey Grant, which is Wildland Urban Interface Grant with the Weston County Fire Protection Board, our district. And we are working with private landowners to mitigate fuel or wildfire hazard on the property. And one of the things that's going along with that is we're rewriting the, we're going to start here in this new year, rewrite and update of the Weston County Fuels Mitigation Plan. And so I will be communicating some of that with the council and as we do some of those updates and identify hazards, identify priority areas. And while a lot of our work is outside of the city limits or outside of the limits of town of Upton and so on, all these efforts are in a larger scale, hopefully, helping to mitigate the potential fire coming into these communities as well. And that's why this grant is called the Wooey or the Wildland Urban Interface. And all of our communities are in that area. We all butt right up against the timber. And it's not too far of a stretch to think about a severe wildfire coming into our communities. And so that's a big thing that we're focusing on with this rewrite, trying to identify areas of focus moving forward. The last rewrite for this plan was in two thousand eighteen. And so about every five years, it's recommended these are updated. And it's also required in order to continue to apply for these scheduled grants that we're using. So that's another thing we're going to be working on. And also community garden, the continuing efforts there, trying to get the word out more. We're working with Sage Brush Marketing to develop some really nice colorful signs that we're going to hang up over there. So really excited about that to be getting the word out more. We'll have a phone number up there where people can call and reserve spots in the garden. And hopefully, we're going to fill that garden next summer because that cuts down on the weed management that I have to do if all the beds are being grown in. So with that, I guess the other thing that we're also working on is now that I've been here for a while, I'm trying to also increase our education and outreach in the schools. We've started a five hundred dollar grant for school classrooms or youth groups, scout groups, church groups, anybody homeschool groups that are interested in doing activities around Ag and natural resources. They can apply for this Cox share grant of five thousand dollars to, or five hundred dollars, excuse me, to get assistance with that too. So we're trying to find ways to let people know we're not only Ag. You know, when people think about conservation districts, they think, well, it's for the farmers and ranchers. And while that is a big part of what we do, we're also here to serve our community members, the residents of the city of Newcastle, the town of Upton, and, you know, their district members that pay to our mill levy. And we're trying to find ways to support, you know, that demographic as well. So I guess with that, one of the things that I thought about tonight is I'd like to know for you as the city council members, how often would you like me to report here to you? How often would you want updates? What types of updates do you want? And how can I, you know, help keep you informed without taking up too much time and, you know, in meetings as well?
I think it would be quarterly or biannual and whatever.
I think I've been doing about annual lately, but if you would like more regular updates, you know, biannual, quarterly, I can certainly do that. So yeah, it's really up to what you guys think would be appropriate.
You're doing a lot.
We're trying to stay busy.
Let's say biannual.
Okay. Sounds good. I just realized that I've never actually asked that question. I'm actually going to the commission meeting tomorrow and ask them the same thing. So because I want to make sure that I'm keeping you guys informed. And obviously, if there's something that comes up that I feel is relevant and needs to be discussed or whatever, I will reach out as well. But if you're happy with biannual, then I'll put that on my calendar and we'll make that happen.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Caleb.
Business verbal number three Ferguson's parking on South Summit.
So Mayor O'Carroll and members of the council, thank you for letting us come. Just voice, I guess, our perspective on what's going on over there. I'm sure you're all familiar with the parking and the little thing there. And we moved to Newcastle a couple of years ago and we were renting in the, had the parsonage behind the Episcopal Church. And so they allowed us to park in the daycare parking lot on weekends when they weren't using it, which was convenient because the church asked us to move our cars from the street where they typically parked. And so that was just what we did. And there was two or three times, I think, that we forgot. And Monday morning, they would call the guy at the church and he'd call me, sorry, let me get over there and move it. So that was pretty much all the dealings that we had with them. We moved from there the end of September, October first, to the house right across from the daycare. And I still parked my vehicle over there on a weekend. And I think I left a trailer there once and things had changed. And I didn't hear from the people from the daycare, but they called the police and the police showed up. I was like, oh, hi, what's going on? So I went over there and I said, are we not supposed to be parking here now? And he pointed at the sign like, hello, here's the sign. I was like, okay, that's clear enough. And so we would just park on the street instead. And you have to understand that there's six of us and we have older children. We all have vehicles and so we have a lot of cars. And that house is right in the middle of the street between the alley and the next street down. And there's one spot in the apartment, you know, the driveway there and then one on the curb. And if we wanted to block the driveway, then we might get another one in there, but that's only half of our vehicles. And so it's an issue for us to not have the parking across the street. I understand that we have a couple of vans and they're kind of hard to see around, but that's not an unusual circumstance in this town. Deanna and I, it's my wife Deanna, we kind of took a drive around town yesterday. And the two biggest ones that come to mind are fully on the alley by First Aid Bank. I mean, that's always blocked with vehicles and stuff. There's just a lot of situations where, you know, this is not an unusual circumstance. And parking is a premium. And so anyway, it's a little frustrating to come home. I'm a contractor and have a truck full of tools and don't really have anywhere to put them other than unloading them and hauling them into the backyard. Yeah, through the neighbor's yard. Fortunately, they'll let us do that. And so, you know, I don't really want to just leave them out on the street overnight. And so anyway, I pull up there in the evenings and nobody there, nobody, you know, the parking lot's not being used, the street's not being used, there's nobody there and I can't park there. Seems a little goofy. So anyway, we just thought we'd come and make a little bit of a plea here that we could allow a few vehicles to park there or so maybe just after hours of weekends. Questions?
So we were approached by the business owner at a council meeting and we told him to work it out with their neighbors and that if they ran into issues, to come back to us. So, I mean, they said they had talked to you guys and that you guys quit parking next to the business.
Yeah, the parking lot.
For a couple of weeks. And then you started parking there again. And then what it turned into was a safety issue because some of the daycare parents said they were trying to pull out and it wasn't bad when your little cars were parked there, but when the vans were there, they couldn't see. And a lady pulled out in traffic and almost got hit. So then it turned into a safety issue for us. So then we, they approached the council again. And, you know, since it didn't work out when they asked you guys not to park there. And then that is their private property, right? So parking in their parking lot is an option if they don't want you to. But then there was like the block up next to the Episcopal Church. And then where you're parking now, I thought that was a viable solution. I mean, you're parking on the street. Yeah, it's not convenient because it's not right in front of your home, which parking's a premium there, like you said. So as a council, we decided that the best idea was just to make that a no parking zone. Because we even rolled it around where we were like, you know, maybe we could make it a loading and unloading zone, but then there's still people parked there. And then you can't see around them and they're loading and unloading and somebody could still get hit. So we felt like that was the best solution. The problem was to make it a no parking zone. So now you're just inconvenienced because you have to park a little bit further up the street, right? Or on the Episcopal Church side, on that west side of the street. So I guess I don't.
I think there's a little confusion between the parking lot, which is certainly their property. And that's what I was referring to where we would park, well, on Sundays, you know, on the weekends when they were open.
By their parking lot?
In their parking lot.
And in their parking.
Right. On the street, I could see where that is a safety issue, but that's not really their property, you know? They, and they did not, the only communication, I've never met them. The only communication I've ever had from them was that they put up some little signs on their parking lot facing the street saying no parking or like.
So when did they say that they contacted us and how?
So I talked to Amanda and she said that she had talked to you guys. And I didn't require her to give me any written. And she didn't, I didn't require her to give me any written proof. I just took her word for it that she spoke with you guys.
We've never met her. I don't even know who owns the place.
Okay.
And, you know, I, as far as, uh, parking out of the street, that's fine if it's just parking, but, you know, we got equipment and tools and luggage.
And there's still people parking there even though there's no parking right there?
Every day there's people parking there. It's like only us, you know, a lot of the person. It's just, you know.
Well, the curb, the curb's not painted yellow yet and not everybody's aware of it. I'm sure, I mean, you gotta look at the signs, but.
So, within fifteen minutes after they put the signs up, the, I, I'm pretty sure it's the lady that owns the place was out there writing down the number of my daughter's car that was parked there. And I, for whatever reason, you know, I just, it just feels very antagonistic and we had no reason. This is, it seems no reason for it.
Do you think it would help just going over and actually visiting with them? I mean, if you haven't met them yet, that tells me that you haven't tried to go and meet them and say, look, can we work this out?
We didn't know there was a problem.
So.
Okay, we do now, correct?
We do now.
Right, right, right. When I got taken sides, I'm just.
You had to speak with them to, to get permission to park in their parking lot when you were parking there.
No, we never.
You never even, you never had them.
It was the man we were renting from.
Yeah, the church. He told us, hey, it's okay, it's okay to park over there on the side.
Oh, so the, so the.
It was the guy at the Episcopal church that told us we could park there.
To park in the little ones' parking lot?
Yeah.
So you would have, you would have already said so over that?
No, I, he said they had some sort of agreement.
With the renter?
Oh, with the, like with the church people? They, they could park there during Sunday, or Sunday?
No, the rent, whoever rented the house, the parsonage.
Cause we needed actually parking on the weekend.
We made a decision that we, we deemed that no, no parking. Because we felt it was a safety issue based on the concerns that some of the people pulling out of the.
And making way for the little children coming, you know, loading and unloading children. And if it were adults that could kind of really take care of themselves and watch out where they were going, but we're talking to the little children.
Right. So there's, I mean, there's other places that I've been, there's, uh, you know, school zones and such. There's, uh, no parking between seven and nine in the morning and three and six in the afternoon or something like that. But that seems to be, like it would be reasonable. You know, cause I, and I, I'm totally fine with that and we sure don't need to park our big vans over there. We park them up the street, you know, where there's not a safety issue. Anyway.
Bas- based on what you said about feeling singled out or you don't even know the people that are singling you out, you know, I don't.
They call the cops on us.
Do, they've been calling the police on you?
Police show up like fifteen minutes after we look at that side of the street. I mean, it's crazy.
Well, I'm sorry that you guys are inconvenienced and that you feel like you're singled out, but we thought that was the best option.
But, but we didn't make the decision just because of your vehicle sitting there. It works both ways. Even the people that are dropping kids off are picking them up. They can't park there either. You're saying people are parking there.
Oh, they are.
But, the thing is, is people probably haven't seen the signs yet that are doing that. And if they are, then they're in violation. And they should get a ticket. But, I mean, both ways. I mean, if your vehicles aren't there and their vehicles aren't there, then that, to me, that remedies the safety issue.
Yes.
And I hear you. Somebody, somebody's probably parking there, but they're not supposed to be. And the signs have literally been up for two weeks and not anybody there. And, and to me, well, I don't know if that's up to the little ones or not, but somebody needs to inform the people that are doing business in that, in that business. Need to be aware that they cannot park there.
I thought she had told all of her patrons or whatever you call them, so the signs are up.
Couldn't speak to that. Do you have anything else? I guess that's all. I, I, I would request and take it reasonable to put up signs that allow parking on evenings and weekends. Cause that would not, uh, cause any safety issues or any inconvenience to the business. And it certainly would help us out. And I think it would be consistent with the rest of the parking in the town.
I think the fact that they threw that east of people running across the street either.
Yeah.
No, I think that was also vacant for a long time.
So you don't, you don't have ample parking now with that being blocked up?
No, definitely not.
You're parking up by Sunstrom's house? I mean.
Yeah.
That whole line there.
Yeah, it's just, uh.
But that's not a permanent thing.
Well, it can be.
It's no different parking in, on the side of Sunstrom's house than just parking in front of little ones, really.
Except that we can see our vehicles if they're across the street from us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe the mayor comes with a report, number one airport hangar finding. Did you guys all have a chance to review their packets that they gave us at our last meeting? Anybody have questions they would like to ask?
We're just looking through the information line. It looked like it was an eight-place, eight-place hanger.
We don't know that yet. That's part of, uh, task order that we're, that we're asking to assign. And get the engineers going so we can find out how much money we have available and what we can do with that money.
I think I read one of them that was noting that was an eight, eight-place hanger.
Yeah, it's, it's out of scope work. I said that at eight-place, yeah. And, uh, yeah, they, they figured that's probably the maximum, uh, that we could do with the money available, but that's, it's all gonna be depending on when the bids come out and, uh, you know, once they figure out what the price is. Still, when they, uh, right now the plan is to when they, when that goes out to bid, it will be an option. As to the five, eight, start with the next year, you know, when they say eight, six, four. Just a lot, lot depending on the contractor's cost and then obviously the cost of steel and, you know, structures.
I just wanted to notice that one. I just wondered if there was enough planes or wherever that it would be that you could be able to house them and you're anticipating that more, if you're gonna be able to house.
Well, we're hoping to, uh, yeah, we've got three, three people right now that, uh, that said if, if we do give them bill or get processed, they would like to put their name on all this, but, yeah. Taken any, uh, written down any, I mean, as far as giving anybody guarantees that it's not coming. There's another plane moving to town, so that would be cool.
I found it. We're at C123, target description, design bid build of one eighteen, two-hanger.
Yeah, that's good. So, would be right now probably the maximum that we could fit in there. And over, uh, over the past few years, we've had a lot of, I get a lot of phone calls, people wanting to know if we have hangar space. Uh, cause there's, it really isn't many around the hills at all. It's Spearfish and Rapid City and Gillette, but there is a call. And, uh, we have actually had a ride in one of the hangers now, but it's from customer because there's nothing over there. So they, so we can't, there's no guarantee. I mean, they, they may have found someplace by now or sold their hangers, but, uh, but we do get, uh, so. If they're not filled by monthly, monthly customers, there's transits come in, spend the night, week, and that bill, they'll rent it. They would like to have their points inside.
I know you guys have been improving stuff out there for many, many years, you know? Kind of good to see that. I wanted, just wanted to make sure, I guess, where are you, where are you looking forward for future? Um, you know, going something like this, but, you know, just kind of get your vision.
Yeah. And these, uh, these hangers can also be added on to. They're, that's what they're designed, uh, you know, in the future if we need more, they can be added on to. And also, the way that the, the taxiways that we constructed two years ago, the way those are built, uh, on the highway side of those, they're also open to anybody who wants to break, build their own private hangar. Most people don't want to do that. They just sit in that one, but there are people that, you know, if they get filled up or something, they'd like to build their own. That is, I'm voting for that too.
I got a friend that flies. And so we were at, uh, Rock Springs Airport the other day. And then they had all of those like personal hangers with the doors that flop up and you can just pull those small planes in there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's what kind of the people. You, only there, yeah, they're all connected and, uh, and then they have, uh.
So kind of like a storage like slash hanger where you could just pull in and park your own. Okay. Oh, they, uh, they also kind of reminded me like a storage unit or something, you know?
I was just thinking that storage unit for planes.
Yeah, you could park your airplane in there. So a pretty cool idea. Maybe I can talk him into storing his plane there and then he can come up to visit more.
You could actually have him respond.
Have you guys, um, had a meeting since our last meeting?
Uh, not official board meeting, no.
Okay. I was just wondering, um, if you guys came up with like a range of what you were gonna rent them for, just to see how long it would be for renting the hangar, what it's costing.
We've given that some thought, but let's, let's focus in on the fact that the, the city's participation in it, participation on the whole thing is eighteen thousand dollars, almost nineteen thousand dollars. No matter what we charge, that pays out fairly quick. They're going to get, I would think, between a hundred and two hundred dollars per unit. I hate to spit that out, but I know that's what you're looking for. But I'm, that's what I'm thinking we're gonna do is between one and two hundred dollars per unit.
Um, annual rental for the unit or monthly, monthly a hundred to two hundred bucks a month?
Anybody else having?
Uh, one other thing I was gonna ask tough. If someone were to come in and want to hang her overnight or for a week or whatever, what would be available right now? Um, less the, the privately owned hangars, what would be available out there?
There's nothing.
We don't have any. Uh, there's a couple of things that I'd like to point out too on the, uh, for one, the, the percentage of, of input on the city and the county in comparison to what opportunities that opens up also for the area. Um, sounded to me like the question mainly was focused in on, um, how long is it gonna take for us to pay the hangers off at the price in which we charge per day or per month or a year? Not considering, they didn't drive a motorhome in, so they're probably gonna stay, probably gonna eat. Um, maybe do some shopping. And these are individuals that, that have an aviation background. So, um, they'll probably purchase something while they're here. So that's, that's something that I would kind of like to just slide in there on the, uh, right now, we don't have the opportunity to tend to them that way. Uh, one thing that tough brought up during the fire, we just missed it by, I think it was a couple of miles by getting the fuel sales from the fire even here, because Spearfish was a little bit closer. Some of those things you can't, you can't plan out, but if they know if they're gonna stop in and maybe get some fuel, because we are fairly cheap, um, on our fuel here at Mondell, if there's an opportunity for them to stay, that's another, that's another reason. The, the hangers would be appropriate for that. Whether they were rented out annually, maybe even have a couple that are, that are held back for day use.
It just, it just doesn't seem like, you know, eighteen thousand dollars in the grand scheme of things when this could potentially, um, form a, a stream of revenue to Newcastle. And then of course, uh, like my friend, he's, I picked him up at Mondell and parked his plane out there a couple of times and, I mean, um, you know, if he tells people that they have good facilities here in Mondell and maybe those pilots are gonna come here and stop, you know, and word of mouth, um, I mean, any progress or any development is, isn't necessarily a bad thing, so.
We're bringing a million and a half dollars worth of, uh, asset for, for a two percent match from you, from y'all and two percent match from the tenant. And it's not so much the, the return we get on the, on the, for renting the hangers out is we get to enjoy the revenue stream that comes with the type of people, the class of people that, that are bringing these airplanes in. If the, uh, if a guy owns a, an airplane that's fifty to two hundred thousand dollars and he's using that to commute to town, then, then what other businesses is he involved in? This, so it's a, it's a gateway for bigger and better business.
Having lived somewhere that, um, you know, had a lot of rich people moving in, that's also weird and scary to me. So, I mean, it, it's a double edged sword.
Well, we wanted to come and visit.
We do have, I don't know.
I love that we go for this.
I stuck.
Do you have a motion and second any further discussion?
I think it's busy, yeah, they're constantly looking out, you know, what plans to, you know, forward looking for the airport areas.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those who pulled the same sign? Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
For giving us time to review it.
Okay, well, um, is it all right Stacy, if I just stop by and pick that up on Wednesday? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to the apartment heads, uh, city foot quarter, Stacy.
One thing I had is to remind you all that our next meeting will be Jan thirty-third on a Tuesday versus Monday.
Any questions for public works supervisor Gray Stone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Has everybody got a chance to review the? Are there any questions?
Oh, I was curious about the dog park moving over next to the senior housing.
Yep.
Um, cause the, the, the idea was to do with it Centennial Park on this side of the creek, the north side of the creek.
Yeah, between the creek and the highway or highway fence.
But then you just thought better of it and.
I think it would be more convenient if people had parking closer to the actual dog park instead of having to either walk along the highway or over from Centennial Park through the park. Just more convenient for people to use.
Okay.
It was my thought.
So this is the senior housing off of you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a, there's an area there, um, to the south of the senior housing that would work great for, uh, even a two hundred, two, two and three, two hundred foot dog, hundred to two hundred foot long dog runs. Um, there's an area right there that's flattened out that we can grab and use for parking areas. There'd be off-street parking and such. Some of the dog parks I've been to in different towns, uh, they all have parking fairly close to it. benches for people to sit on in the, in the dog runs. I think it'd be a little more convenient.
I think so.
It'd be bigger. The other part by using the north side of the, the north side of the, uh, creek is when we have to clean the creek out. And we do have to clean it out sometimes. Now, we have a bunch of rocks. It's actually. creek is when we have to clean the creek out, and we do have to clean it out sometimes, but, you know, we have a bunch of rocks that's actually moved, migrated down to the west end of the park that we need to actually pick up and move back up and further to the east and the, and the creek. We access that area through on that side, so we don't damage the park and the sidewalks with equipment.
Yeah, that seems to be well thought out. I was just curious.
No, no problem.
Ready for the cold weather?
Yeah. Um, it may be kind of difficult to get equipment to start. We, we had three, three pieces of equipment today that was only one, zero, zero when we went to work. Gets down to twenty-three below trying to get these one things to start is pretty much all we get done in eight hours a day, so. Hopefully we don't have anything major go on, but, um, we're still planning on doing some stuff if we can. The well five project, I'm pretty sure the timeline is gonna change on that again. I didn't see the contractor today, I don't expect to see them when it's twenty-three below trying to start their decent, and begin their work, so. I'm pretty sure that project's probably held off for another week, if not two. Sewer issue up on Grandview Drive, uh, that happened actually Friday night, we, our rotor almost got stuck in the sewer. We early get through the weekend, called in emergency little pace today and started digging for it. Unfortunately, the mapping in that area is really not very good, I just shoot. So it's kind of a hot back search for this sewer main, so we can get our rotor back out of it and get it open back up soon.
Do you guys still have the data from when you, uh, from when you ran the, the sewer camera, that, uh, sewer tractor up there?
Yeah, and we only got seventy feet though, and they located out seventy feet, we're a hundred and fifty-six feet away.
Oh, so you're up past that last residence?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're about midway up the street, and the other problem is the water main does a kind of weird jog in there over top of the sewer main right in that area, so.
When, when we were working on the sewer, and I still worked for the city, it's like they put the sewer line in to avoid a giant rock or something, because there must have been a place that was too hard to dig, so they, they just kind of bent the sewer line around the rock.
Yeah, and trying to locate that.
You said you were working on it then?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
We, we've been trying to find the end of this thing for quite some time, and we've had a plan to go in there and dig up somewhere in the area we're going to be digging in and locate the line on farther up, cause we couldn't get any farther than seventy feet up the bike or the camera, so. I just wish it would have happened in the summertime, but we were planning on doing something similar to this, frost is about a foot and a half deep right now, so. Pretty early for the frost to be that deep.
Yeah. It's only gonna get worse.
Ah, yeah.
Oh, there was a section about the, uh, Durupatcher.
Yep.
You guys still have your eyes on the Durupatcher for pretty?
Yes, I just need to get with Stacy and figure out the funding portion. The Durupachers are still in there, we actually have six units ready to be sold and rebuilt, so it's not like a big rush to get one.
And then, uh, my final question, I, I dropped the ball on this one, I brought up the whole idea about, um, maybe sending away the tires by rail, uh, I never followed up on that. So, John, can I get with you after the meeting? You, you gave me a couple of names, and I, I just never followed up on it, so I, uh, I'd like to see if that's a viable option.
Yeah, Craig and Philmy with D and Q did say we could store more tires than, than what's allowed in our permit.
Okay.
Um, and at the end of the, end of the landfill life, when we get ready to close it down, when the counties has opened up, push them in, pile a bunch of concrete on top of them or something like that, and bury them if we need to, so.
Okay. Let's all like that.
Any other questions? Thank you. Uh, moving on to the police department, um, uh, Chief Bowles, uh, has been getting his feet wet, they're getting submerged.
And he's gone!
Yeah, he will be returning now, uh, but he'll be back probably the fifth or the sixth of January with his handling, so that'll be nice. Um, he's got a lot of great ideas, um, but he still wants to get a better idea of our community and who he has on staff right now. Uh, since our last meeting, the calls for service for community service officer has been thirty-six, the city crew two, and PB sixty-nine, for a, um, total year to date, four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven. Um, one thing that is starting to concern, um, some employees, which will come back to the council, is they're all getting pretty close or even gonna be over this next pay period on what they can accrue for sick, comp, and vacation. Um, and they really can't take any time off, um, so, was it in the policy? Uh, I had Stacy grab the policy to see if we may have to make some changes possibly, um, but I would like to see if we're able to maybe pay out some of that to them, so they're not losing it.
I mean, is there a way to declare some kind of a special circumstance so that we don't have to change the policy? Cause this isn't something that's normal by any means.
And if we pay it out and it's not changing policy, written policy, or having to extend it or add, add vacation time, comp time, wording to it, so they're, they're paying it out, so we're still be able to maintain that level, way I get that, right?
Yeah, I just didn't know if this could turn into an issue in the future with people wanting to come and get paid for their vacation or something if we change the policy. But if we have some kind of a special circumstance involved, and say, hey, we, we understand that this isn't the way we wanted it to be, so we don't want you guys to get shafted on your time.
They work hard for it, um, but we got, we printed off, um, where they're at, and quite a few of them are pretty close, um, to where, um, they're gonna have to use it or lose it type thing, but there's no way they can.
No, cause they don't have the option at all, so.
And this is the dispatchers as well as the officers.
In, in a way, you know, if they get to the point and pay it out, it'd be, it'd almost like it'd be your bonus piece to pay it out, then they're not losing it basically.
They'll lose some tax or something that goes on, you know.
Three that are gonna be over. So there's three that are gonna be over, um, with this next pay period.
So you can get something figured out soon then, right?
By the end of this month.
And we're not gonna have a meeting before the end of the month.
No, that's what I want to just see, but I think with it being a special circumstance, we can.
This does include the final pay period, so just, so we are okay until the next.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's good. So there's three positive four that are gonna start losing stuff, three for sure, four.
So do we need to make a decision?
For clarification, what day does that come, where it does actually go over into the next?
January. January would be our first pay period.
And your next meeting is the third, right?
So our next pay period, or pay date would be January sixth.
Still doesn't leave you a lot of time.
Should I try to email Dublin or Mark and see if there's any, um, conflict in, do we need to do anything specific to allow us to pay them out?
I would, to be on the safe side.
They're catching, uh, Golden Dorado right now, the, the hueses are in Argentina.
Oh.
That's too bad he's not here.
There's a large, kind of sporty fish or something, yeah, there's no one. I'm jealous, I'd love to do that.
I wanted to see if she was on top of the nice one. Where's that?
Uh, Argentina, somewhere somewhere in Argentina.
Alright, so, um, we're gonna check with attorney to make sure about if we make, if we are allowed to make just a special motion. Um, and Stacy said she has plenty of time, if we're able to do the special motion and it passes, and to pay it out by the sixth.
So.
Make a motion on the third.
Oh, so we don't have that special meeting or anything?
Yeah, just to make sure we're doing everything right, she's gonna email him just to make sure. But, um, we'll have to, I guess, also find out from the ones that are close, um, what they would, what would we do, like forty hours, eighty hours, hell?
I would, I recommend forty.
Probably forty to eighty. So I can check with the employees that are close and check with Dublin, so then we'll know where to wait, what needs to be done after the meeting on the third. That sounds good.
So, are, are we short, we're short dispatchers right now, so they're having to work extra shifts and extended shifts or something?
Well, and overtime as well, so, but today we had to, um, someone had to leave for an emergency and someone had to come in, so it's overtime for them.
Understood.
So when, when you say forty hours or eighty, are we, do we not know?
Well, we just said how much should we take, and Stacy recommended it be forty, to pay them out. Because what happens is, is it eventually rolls over from vacation to sick, right?
No, we, we roll, we roll sick into vacation, but if they're at their maximum for vacation, they don't accrue anymore, right?
Excludes it.
Cause they should get, you know, an X number, amount of hours per pay period.
But it won't be all of the employees, it'll be just the ones that are in trouble, or, I mean, you can make some kind of motion for if we're still with them, six months or something.
It'll take them a while to build up that, that forty hours.
But I'm talking about the other employees that aren't there yet, but once they get there, if we can still have that option at least for that, you know what I'm saying? If so, you can put that on the agenda. Um, I know that, uh, the chief has, um, put up some more advertisements in some other, um, areas as well as the ones that we utilized already. And I'm not quite sure if he's received anything yet, but I know he's put some other stuff up there. That's all I have.
Um, I can add something to the police department really quick, I called Chuck today, uh, in regard to chapter fifty-six. And, uh, he said although he's home, he still answered his phone, he's down where, where he lives, and, and he said he could, uh, join by phone, cause he'd like to be present for our meeting. That's all I got.
Do we have a phone number for him? Yes, but you're gonna, I'll be in a while.
Okay.
Um, and then if there's nothing else on that, we don't have, uh, returns, did he leave anything for you to discuss? Um, so we'll move on to standing committee reports, um, I do, um, need the personnel committee, which is Darren and Lance. If you could stay after for a couple minutes, um, that would be great. And then, I don't have anything else for standing committee reports. Any other business? Claims against the city dated December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I know that we pay the claims against the city.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion?
I have something. I just noticed that the, uh, the, uh, bill for frontier, uh, was kind of high, Greg.
That, that was actually probably, um, over two to three months worth of bills.
Oh.
Um, it had gone to, we get an email, the statement, and it had gone to Heather's junk mail, and she just relaxed.
Oh, okay, so I was wondering, cause it was quite a, quite a spike, and it just seemed outplaced to me, so I just wanted to make sure, so, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. At eight oh seven.